Okay. So, my name is Jeff Lee. I'm the president of Wassa School Board. I've called a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wassa School District. Will everyone please stand for 20 seconds? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we start with the audit? Can we start with the audit? And give a chance for the spotlight to arrive?
Yeah, mine's mine. Oh, sure, sure. Okay, yeah, I just got one quick statement. All right, I have a statement that we read at the beginning of every school board meeting. During this meeting, board members will, in many cases, be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will, in many cases, be extemporaneous and should not be considered either their final opinion on a matter, nor should any opinion expressed by an individual board member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the board as a whole unless it is presented by the presiding officer as such. And that, of course, will occur after we have come to consensus. And so, Kathy, you want to move to the auditing report?
Chuck's ready.
Sure, I'll just maybe introduce you, Chuck. A familiar face here this evening, Chuck Krieger from Hawkins Ash Accounting Firm. He's conducted our independent audit for the last several years, at least since I've been here. And it's important to understand that you hired him as a school board. It is an independent audit. And our role in the business department is just to feed him all the information he needs, right? And I have to give a lot of this credit for such a clean audit to Noel and Janet. Noel Torson and Janet Toos in our business office. Incredible what they accomplished back there. And I think Chuck finds that they're very cooperative. And our books are about as clean as you'll come across. And that's all credit to Janet and Noel in the back office department. So, thank you. But without further ado, how about if I turn it over to you, Chuck? You can answer some of the highlights.
Thank you. And first off, I'd have to echo Bob's comments. You have really good staff in the business office. And I've worked with some school districts that don't have such good staff. You really have some really good people there, so they're to be commended for this. But I won't spend a lot of time going through the audit report, but obviously, if you have questions as I go along, feel free to let me know. I think everyone's got it either on their iPads or in front of them in hug copy. Old-school auditor that I am, I have the hug copy. Anyway, let's start with pages three to five. That's the independent auditor's report. And Bob kind of alluded to it. We are independent. You do hire us, and we serve as an independent oversight of your books and the operations. The auditor's report is, you can see there's clear subheadings under there for what it is. It's a report on the financial statements. Management responsibility, basically, you're responsible for presenting the information to us and having it booked in good order. Our responsibility is to look at the information you provide and make sure it is in good order. Bottom of page three is the opinions. And the opinion, basically, is, I guess, what you're paying for. The financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects financial position and operation of the district. Now, a couple of things to note there. All material respects. We don't look at every transaction, okay? By necessity, we can from a time and cost perspective, and you wouldn't want us to. But in all material respects, it presents fairly the financial position of the district. Top of page four, just emphasis of a matter. During the current year, the district implemented what's known as a Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75. You actually implemented that in 1617 for your other post-employment benefits and some of that stuff. The implementation of this was for Wisconsin Retirement System has a life insurance fund activities. You pay very little toward that. I think the total cost is probably around $20,000 a year. But there is an unfunded liability for that, okay? And that's what the emphasis of a matter is referring to. We had to book that liability during this year. The other matters talks about some of the other schedules that we have, other things that we do, like on the other information we do. A single audit for you and give an opinion on that. A single audit is to look at federal and state funding grants. Typically, federal grants, you get significant funding from your food service program, Title I, IDEA, which is the handicapped aid for federal purposes. And then the state, you get general aid and handicapped aid are the two biggest ones there. Now, if we want to move on to the pages six through 17, management discussion and analysis. This information is based on numbers that we've provided to Noel. We gave him a draft of our financial without this section in it. He provides what I call the synopsis of what went on during the year. Highlights talking about what your financial position did. Did it go up or down? I had to say make money or lose money, but that's more of a commercial concept. But really, you want to know how you did according to budget. And, you know, some years, you expect that you're going to lose money based on the budget, trying to keep the tax rate down and what have you. And so, Noel and his office staff provide the information that's in the first few pages. Just a couple of things to note there. Long-term liabilities decreased. If you look to page, I'm talking about, on page 16, they talk about some of the liabilities. The Wisconsin Retirement Liability actually decreased. Now, the Wisconsin Retirement System has two liabilities, one for the regular retirement program and one for this life insurance program I talked about. The one for the activity for the retirement system is much larger. It's big number. Last year when I was here, I mentioned there was a liability which meant the Wisconsin Retirement System was funded at something around 98% of what they thought they were going to have to pay out over the next 50 years. Good market in 17 and into 18. So, at this point, the Wisconsin Retirement System is overfunded to about 2%, 2.5%, 2.7%. The Wisconsin Retirement System retirement plan is one of the few in the nation that is more than 100% funded. And I think this goes back to the conservative nature and what have you there. But they're probably one of the, it's probably only two or three in the country that are 100% of better funded. So, from that aspect, they're in good shape, which means since you don't have a liability and it's overfunded, there's an asset on the books. As I mentioned, when there is an asset, it's not something you can go and spend. It's meant your portion of what's out there for future retirees. I guess I'll mention a little bit on page 10 and 11. 10 goes, gives you what in commercial language would be a balance sheet. Shows you assets, lets you liabilities, and then your net position is really what your equity is left with. And you can see, I mean, you have a big operation here. Assets including your capital assets and long-term debt and all that. Assets and current assets, capital assets, deferred outflows, that's $225 million. That's a lot of stuff that you guys are responsible for, okay? If we flip to page 11, the other one is the balance sheet. This would be in commercial terms, an income statement. Revenue's coming in, expenses going out. And you had some change in net position. You can see general revenues. Most of your revenues comes from property taxes and state formula aid grants. That's general state aid. And the expenses, you can see instruction is your biggest expense. You would hope instruction would be your biggest expense. That's what you're in the business for. Okay, so, this is the synopsis, kind of talks about fixed assets on 15. On page 17, there's some factors bearing on the district's future. Mostly talking about you've taken some steps to improve your energy efficiency. You've borrowed some money for that. You've got some ongoing capital projects that are kind of winding down and nearing their end. But as they talked about here, you know, paying debt, you have to kind of balance what you need with how much debt you can have and what's fiduciarily responsible. And then there's always shifting student demographics. Open enrollment affects a lot of districts. Some more than others. I think in your case, you're fairly well-balanced on the ones coming in and the students going out. Now, that just means that's not a detriment to you. You would always like to have more students coming into your district than going out to other districts who receive services. So, after that, pages 18, 19 are more detail on information I touched on earlier, showing you assets, liabilities. And if you look at page 18, just one under the deferred outflows of resources, Wisconsin Retirement System Pension, $32 million. That's kind of a projected asset that you would get as time goes on. That's the $32 million I said you have, but you can't spend, okay? Now, if we flip over to, the important stuff from your standpoint would be pages 19 and 20. This is the balance sheet and your statement of revenues and expenses based on what DPI wants to see, okay? It doesn't add in fixed assets, doesn't add in long-term debt. So, if we concentrate on page 21, sorry, this is revenues and expenses. Again, I mentioned you have about, in the general fund. Now, the general fund here includes your special ed operations. You've got about $107 million in revenue and almost $107 million in expense. So, you added to fund balance a little bit this year, about $225,000. Anytime you can add something to fund balance, you're in better shape than you were the year before. For comparison purposes, your general fund balance is about 27% of current year expenditures. So, you've got about, almost $29 million, and your current year expenditures were about $107. So, 27%, that's a good number. Districts that I deal with from my Manocock office range from 10% to 37%. 37% is working it down by adding some capital improvements and not borrowing money for them. And the 10%, frankly, I wouldn't be comfortable writing that 10% of fund equity, but it works. We talked about instruction. Your instruction's about 58.5% of your total expenses. Again, that's a pretty good number. The ones that I see from my Manocock office range from 54% to 63%. So, you've kind of right where you should be on that. And after that, I guess the only other thing I will mention is page 23 and 24. These are fiduciary funds. This is money that you are responsible for, but it's really not your own money. Student activities is a big number. You guys by far have most student activities than any district I deal with. You've got a lot of stuff going on. Kids wanting to do stuff, and it's great because that means they're active, engaged, okay? The trust fund section, the employee benefit plan, this is what you're putting aside to fund your retirement healthcare benefits for retirees. And you're making progress on that. You're up to $3 million of money. Your total liability, I'm not exactly sure what it is, but it's probably in $25 or $30 million range, which means anything that you put aside is always better than wait until the bill comes due, okay? After that, there's footnotes. I'm not going to bore you with all the information in the footnotes. It's there if you want to look and see more detail on what kind of debt you have and a lot of the verbiage that you may have on describing the Wisconsin Retirement System or your healthcare, post-employment healthcare benefits. It's nice to see it's there. If you've got questions on it, obviously, you can ask Noel if you have a chance later on. You say, hey, I really didn't understand that. Shoot an old question. He'll get it to me and I'll get you an answer, okay? I know that was very quick, but I also know everybody's time is valuable, so.
Any questions, any comments?
And we're hoping that we don't ever have a year where you have to come in and tell us all kinds of problems that you found and we have to have a long discussion about. So, this is actually the way we prefer it.
Well, that's what I prefer too.
Yeah.
But again, you've got, given the size of your district, you've got what I call adequate segregation of duties, you know? You've got Noel that's in charge of stuff, Janet that does stuff, you've got payroll people, you've got HR people, and then Bob kind of oversees a lot of that. So, you've got enough, the problems tend to come about with districts that don't have the financial resources to hire people in all those specialties. And I've got some districts that are small, they have one person in the business office and then one payroll person. And it's like, okay, how do you split up the duties there? Well, then, board members maybe have to come in and look at stuff on a periodic basis and do some checking and that type of thing. And not say that that's necessarily bad, because if you have good hiring practices, you're going to get good people. But it also lends itself to the possibility for inadequate segregation of duties.
All right, anything else? Well, good. It's a good, clean report. Thank you very much, and thank you again to Bob and Janet and Noel and everybody else who worked with Parkett this, all through the years, so that we had a good audit. That's great. All right. Are they?
We'll get you out of here just as you're supposed to begin.
Sounds like a good night. Okay, spotlighting education, people, are they here? All right, let's go to that. Is that part of the presentation?
Good evening. My name is Liz Kissley, and I'm the instructor for Lumberjack Productions. It's hard for me to believe that approximately one year ago today, Lumberjack Productions went live at their first broadcast. This opportunity has always been possible due to the community support and daily voting that allowed the grant application to become a finalist in the nationwide Think America's Teacher $100,000 contest. We are so fortunate to have such amazing facility that's outfitted with industry-standard equipment that's utilized every day to create top-match productions that would compete with any broadcast program, not only in Wisconsin, but throughout the nation. I know this because I personally had the opportunity to travel last summer to the PBS Student Reporting Lab facility in Washington DC to broaden my knowledge of the broadcasting industry and collaborate with professionals and instructors from across the nation. Joining me this evening are members of the Lumberjack Production Team, Jacob Moore, Nate Alcelka, and Brenton Canice, who prepared a short video to showcase the studio and our facilities.
Good morning, Lumberjack!
From our studios to your classroom, we hope you have a great Lumberjack afternoon.
Good evening. I'm Jacob Moore. I'm currently a junior at Wassa East. I've been with Lumberjack Productions since the beginning, and I tend to spend all my free time there, even in the summer when I'm not at band camp. I thrive working behind the scenes in the engineering and control room, or editing videos in Adobe Clearer, or on WeVideo for workouts outside of the class, or getting audio in Adobe Audition.
Hello, my name is Neil Alcelka. I am currently a senior at Wassa East. I have been with Lumberjack Productions since the beginning, and I am one of the special reporters. I talk about varying subjects like sports, interviews, and events happening at Wassa East. Lumberjack Productions has helped me understand the behind-the-scenes of TV news reporting and filmmaking.
My name is Brenton Canice. I'm currently a senior at Wassa East, and I've been with Lumberjack Productions since the beginning, which was last year. Personally, I would like to talk about Lumberjack Productions as a whole and what it means to education in general, to what I believe it means. Lumberjack Productions should be what every class should be. Lumberjack Productions represent collaboration and communication, which is vital to what makes education successful, positive, and fun for students. Lumberjack Productions has had the opportunity to work with many individuals in the community and within the school district, within Wassa East itself, to create lots of great productions to not just represent our classroom, but what we do outside of the classroom, what these great people do throughout the community and inside Wassa East. Lumberjack Productions has worked with Wassa East on their school safety video last year, ensuring the safety within the school and making sure that students and staff know what will happen in a situation if that were to happen and how Wassa East would react. Also, Tom Field of Wassa East recently got scoreboards at their facilities, and Lumberjack Productions had to make sure that we put professional pieces together to make sure the community and spectators watching the sports were able to enjoy not just the sports, but on the visual aspect and hopefully take them to, in fact, students took time out of their day to work on these projects to make sure they had a great experience at that scoring event. So, in conclusion on my part, Lumberjack Productions helps basically build the community together. To me, I started out in this class wanting to go into broadcast as a career because it taught me so much on how communication and collaboration is so important, no matter what subject you're talking about here, especially when we're working together fixing problems, building the pieces, and congratulating each other. And what we did that was successful, so that's what Lumberjack Productions means to me. Thank you.
In closing, we would like to once again thank our local agent, Mark Larson, with Farmers Insurance, for sponsoring us in the grant process. I would also like to personally thank Paula Hayes, who's our librarian, for taking my big ideas and helping us write the winning grant. I would like to thank my students for making each day an adventure, some that I didn't plan for. We'd like to thank Kendall Misoney, Charles Kirsch, Janet Toos, and Larry Siller, who went above and beyond to help us coordinate and spend the money, which you would think would be really easy. It actually got very complicated because once we got it, everybody wanted a piece. We are so fortunate to work in a community that believes in supporting hands-on opportunities outside of traditional course offerings. Thank you for your continued board support in allowing us to showcase our students and our program tonight. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you very much. And it's always even more special when you bring students along to talk to us. It's a nice personal place too. So, thank you for all that you all are doing. The next item on the agenda is public and student comment for items appearing on the agenda. Later, there'll be student public comment for appearing items not on the agenda. During this section, speakers will be limited to a five-minute so we can keep the meeting going. And it's important for you to know that we can't, the board won't be responding to you directly. We'll be talking about the issues when we come to those on the agenda, but won't be responding directly. Are there any, no one signed up? So, that's just general knowledge for everybody then, all right? So, let's move on to the approval of the consent agenda. This may include additional staff replacement staff, contract increases, decreases, contract renewals, non-renewals, leaves of absence, resignations, terminations, voluntary retirements, minutes from closed session of November 5th, 2018, the regular session of November 12th, 2018, and special session of November 26th, 2018, payment of bills, budget status, and investment report, and donations to the district. So, I'm asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Just a second.
Any discussion, any questions?
Well, I was hoping that, and maybe it's in the agenda, that the number of people who have put in their retirements, that we mention how grateful we are for the number of years in. Am I, is somebody going to speak to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
I'm here.
All right, okay. Just checking.
I'm Carla McKenna-Wis from Human Resources, and I would like to acknowledge 22 retirees in the district. Marjorie Busso, grade one teacher from John Marshall Elementary School. Sue Brickner, EL teacher from John Marshall and Hewitt, Texas Elementary School. Jeffrey Rudnick, mathematics teacher from Wassa West High School. Beth Dimcock, mathematics teacher, Horace Mann Middle School. Colmur Giel, grade two teacher, John Marshall Elementary School. Renee Getz, kindergarten teacher, Franklin Elementary School. Holly Hearn, grade five teacher, John Marshall Elementary School. Cheryl Kinney, grade three teacher, Riverview Elementary School. Kathleen Clement, grade five teacher, Stetine Elementary. Linda Conotac, grade five teacher, Riverview Elementary. Lisa Larson, English Language Arts teacher from John Marshall Middle School. Justine Miller, mathematics teacher, Wassa West High School. Jody Misselbauer, French teacher, John Mear and Horace Mann Middle School. Dana Nash, grade two teacher, Franklin Elementary School. Ginado, EBD teacher, Wassa West High School. Lori Schimmels, Spanish and Language Arts teacher, John Mear Middle School. Susan Schuman, grade five teacher, John Marshall Elementary School. Laurie Jean Strodaugh, grade one teacher, Franklin Elementary School. Susan Werzer, cross-categorical Special Education teacher, John Mear Middle School. Julie Zamzo, grade two teacher, Maine Elementary. Linda Zinda, grade four K teacher, Riverview Elementary. And lastly, we have an administrator this retiring, Thomas Han, Director of Secondary Education from the Longfellow Administration Center. I'm hoping that if anybody is watching or listening to this meeting, thank you for your dedication and support to the Wassa School District and to their students.
Do we have any of the staff members in the room?
For the time.
Do they stand up? Thank you.
Jeff, if you don't mind, I do just want to clarify, one name was misstated. It's Julia Zinda, not Linda Zinda, from Riverview Elementary.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. Julia.
That's right. Okay, thank you very much. All right, do we have anything else under the consent agenda? I believe we have a first and a second already for that. Robert's Rules of Order say that you do the first and seconds first, and then you discuss it. We tend to do it the opposite way around, so when I'm going between institutions, I sometimes get confused on where I am. So, that's one of the exemptions, exceptions to Robert's Rule that we follow here. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Review of the written evaluation of the school's safety drills. That's the next item on the agenda.
So, in early November, we received a word that due to the new safety grants, that we needed to do an evaluation each year of our intruder drills. So, I asked principals, and they graciously did this in quick order because we need to submit everything to the DOJ by January 1st of this year. They completed their drills, which some of them had already done, and they just wrote up a little narrative about what they learned. Horace Mann and- Horace Mann and John Mear just did theirs last week, so I have the feedback in written form, but it's not on your page. But their feedback was similar, that it was good conversation with the students. The majority of the students took it very seriously, some very good questions came up, and some good forethought on what to do in an emergency situation. We also worked with the police department to do a safety assessment on every single building in our district. We had to have that done for the grant as well, so over the last two weeks, the police department worked very hard to get into each one of our schools, worked with the administrators and the custodians to complete that safety assessment.
Was there any outcome of that?
Yes.
Did we get, here's what you should do in this school or that school?
Yep, we got some really good information. We looked at different safety assessments, we weren't able to look very broadly at safety assessments. Larry and I will be working together with the police department to look for next year at maybe some better assessments. This was the best one we found for the time limits that we had, and we thought it was fairly decent, so we did get some really good information.
So is there like a project plan somewhere for whatever the Wassa Police Department recommended in terms of implementing?
Yeah, we just got them all back today, so we're working on that, yeah. We have some themes in the schools, Larry hasn't even seen these yet, so I'm sure he's about to have a heart attack with some of the items that maybe I will show him later on tonight. It's nothing major, but some minor things that we could, we definitely need to work on and look at. So it looked at it from a facility standpoint, and then from our safety plan standpoint as well. So we thought it was a thorough safety assessment of each building.
So are these narratives that are provided going to be sufficient for the reason you need to provide them? Because I'm kind of seeing some discrepancy in the level of detail and what was learned, some are a little bit broader and leave me with questions?
Yeah, for this year, yes, because they gave us such a short time period. And I think they recognize that, yes, they gave us a short time period, just do a little narrative and send it in. Next year, it will be much broader and better.
Even next year though, will they, I hope they don't expect that you will be giving us a public document listing every safety deficiency found in our schools that we then have as a public document for all the world to see? I mean, I'm pretty satisfied with knowing you're working on it and knowing some basics, I wouldn't want to see a list of deficiencies.
That's something we'll work on internally.
Is there?
We have to find out if we can legally withhold that.
Is there going to be a change in parental and guardian notification as to how it happened this year?
Of the Alice drill? We've sent home notification.
Yeah, and I personally received some concerns about it, feeling that it was unclear to the parents. And so, I mean, even if there had been an email to go out, because students do lose papers. Some parents didn't even get the paper till two days after the drill happened. If there's maybe some ways to improve that, to give parents and guardians more notice and try to attack different ways to do that?
That was the first I've heard of it. I didn't know there were concerns out there, so yes, we will work on that.
Yeah, definitely concerns.
This was the first year we've actually notified parents that there was a drill being done. We've done drills since Columbine happened, all the way through till now.
But they differed this year, right? I mean, there were more steps that were taken that would require being able to talk to a student. And I think maybe Jane wants to talk about this too.
Oh yeah.
But, I mean, even for me as a parent, I would have liked to have a little bit more to know.
Sure.
To be able to talk to him, because it's scary to come home and say, "I was under my desk and somebody was going around pretending to be an intruder," and that's very scary.
And I am more than just a tad bit upset that this is just now coming before the board. I have no qualms about teachers and staff receiving training voluntarily, but my concern was and continues to be for the student welfare and the parent's right to choose. Prior to and after the training at East, I pleaded, begged Dr. Hiltz and Dr. Lee to bring this matter before the board prior to exposing our children to another untested, unproven program, as we did with the DARE program. And the evidence is now starting to show that the DARE program did more harm than good. I asked on several occasions where the idea came from to provide this training, crickets. There would be no harm in postponing the training long enough for us to meet, and I was ignored. I could not call my fellow board members because that would be a walking forum, so I had no way to have other board members push this forward. Me, the board, did not know this training was going to take place until the day before it took place at Wassa East. That day, I sent three emails asking that this training be postponed until the board discussed its possible ramifications. Once again, my concerns were and continue to be that Alice training that involves students could cause PTSD or trigger some of our staff or students, could train a possible shooter, as most shooters are current or recent students, as it did in the Parkland shooting in Florida. It did cause a loss of instructional time that we cannot get back. There is no proof that this is effective, even that report that Alice Training Institute relies on stresses this point. There are no studies that tell us how this will affect our students in the long run. I contacted the Alice Training Institute, a for-profit company, and Ashley Hendricks, the program manager, referred me to a joint paper from the National Association of School Psychologists and the National Association of School Resource Officers. The paper states that armed assailants in schools account for only 1% of homicides among school-aged youth. Schools must balance the costs and benefits that, when allocating crisis-preparedness resources, financial and more importantly, human costs. It goes on to say, "Available research supports the effectiveness of lockdown drills carried out according to best practices." But research is still needed on the effectiveness of armed assailant drills. It talks repeatedly about opt-out options for student and staff, but we didn't really give the parents a choice. One-day notice is not sufficient when they aren't given all the information. The training was launched into and ran through, and just now, after all the potential damage has been done, it's being brought to the board. Again, the board didn't have noticed that every school was going to be receiving Alice with intruder training until every school had received a training. I have no doubt this was done with the best of intentions, but we are all so familiar with the saying about what the road to hell is paved with. This was pushed through without the board's knowledge or approval, and I hope we have not trained our own homegrown shooter. I move that before any law enforcement training exercise occurs on district property, board approval must be secured.
Jane, you were not ignored. We spoke, I spoke to Dr. Hiltz and I disagreed with you. You weren't ignored.
No, I was promised that we would discuss this. It got pushed off and got pushed off, and it never happened.
You weren't, you were never promised that we would discuss it before?
I have the email thread right here.
Not before the, you were promised that we would discuss it, but not before the drills. That was not promised, before the drills.
I was ignored.
So you were not ignored, you were disagreed with. And so we are now at the point where we are discussing it.
And the damage has been done.
And has any recorded damage been done?
We don't know. There's no way to possibly know. This is an unresearched, it is unresearched. There is no research that can tell us that no damage has been done. That's my point.
Does everybody realize, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that the active shooter drills are a requirement in every school in the state?
I cannot find that, I would like to see that.
It's a requirement of the safety grant, I believe, is it DPI for, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yep, I have it here, I can read what it says. "School boards are required to ensure that at each school building regularly occupied by students, students are drilled at least annually in the proper response to school violence event."
Is simulated gunfire necessary?
We did not do simulated gunfire.
Right, but originally that was going to be part of the plan.
And I did, I'm just going to say clearly, I expressed my concern and I actually requested to be able to attend the Wassa East drill, because I also felt that this was broader about, we, the board had no discussion of it, I was concerned about any trauma, and the same concerns Jane raised. So there's a difference between the different, the shooter drills that have been, or the drills that have been in the past and what was happening this year.
Yeah, there's nothing in this that says we have to have someone going around pretending to be an intruder. There's nothing in that statement that you just read that says it has to be a danger.
This is year two of implementation of Alice. This is not year one. Jeff Lindell had presented on this last year, and buildings did do this, the same thing last year.
We weren't told that they were using people to go in and terrify our students.
Is there any evidence in this statement was terrified?
I didn't get any.
The paper that they based their training mode on says repeatedly that parents have to have an option to opt their child out of this training. It also states staff should be able to opt out of this training. We did not supply that.
Jane, why are you saying that people were roaming schools and terrifying our students?
With intruder, Alice with intruder, what else does that mean?
Well, I mean, I would ask the question, I guess, before making it as a statement, because that would be news to me, I wasn't aware that there were.
Then explain.
So unaware, yeah.
No, there was nobody going around any of the schools acting like an intruder.
Well then, what does this mean?
This was conversations with the class about the options that they have within the Alice model, one of which is lockdown, which is what we've traditionally done. Another one is put items in front of the door to barricade. Another one is to evacuate the classroom and go out the closest way that you can.
It should have come before the board, before this happened, and evidently it should have happened last year.
There are parents that might be inclined to take their children out, that might not want them for, maybe for one hour, take their children out.
If I could also address that, I have to speak on behalf of the staff that recognize children who have a propensity to be upset by these kinds of events. And, you know, I know personally, at several of the schools, you know, staff members would kind of shield the children from these events and take them elsewhere, they didn't really participate. So I agree, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not disagreeing. I do want the board to know that a number of our staff, I mean, they care about our kids and they're going to protect them if they believe they would be, if they would respond adversely to this kind of event. Not disagreeing with what you're saying about notifying parents, but we do, obviously we put the welfare of the children first.
How different is this drill than a fire drill or some other kind of emergency drill in terms of notification, and how much do the kids know that it's a drill, that sort of thing?
Do you want your, I can speak, oh, go ahead.
With fire drills, there's no notification to parents. With tornado, every year there is, you know, we have it once a year during tornado safety. And with this, there was notification that went home with all students in the district.
Do the students know that it's going to be a fire drill or a tornado drill or the Alice drill, or has it just sprung on them?
Not fire drill, because you have to drill them without them knowing. And again, in certain cases, if a student has a seizure disorder or something, well, take those students out of the building first. Tornado drill, yes, they know, and the intruder drill, yes.
So I'm not sure where the concern is then about preparing kids or doing this. It seemed to me that a fire drill might be more traumatic than this drill.
Originally, when this was brought, there was going to be a significant level of simulation, and contrast that with a fire drill, there's no simulation with the fire drill. We don't have smoke and flames to practice, help the students practice.
Although sometimes they do block some exits, so that you have to practice going on a different exit. I don't, that's not a simulation of fire, but it's drilling them.
Right, that's practice acting.
So at the end of the day, and I recall reading the emails and I think I talked to a few people, at the end of the day, right, Jane, in your intro, you're right, I think the intentions are absolutely credible, right? I mean, it's to help prevent, minimize damage should something like this occur. Clearly, there's opportunities to improve whether it's communication or simulation or to socialize these events beforehand. But I would rather us err on the side of doing these things should we happen to become the next Columbine or whatever it would be, God forbid. But to take the lessons learned, apply it to next year, which it sounds like you're doing, and the goal being that we have a smoother process a year from now than we had today. And much like, I'm sure fire drills weren't the best run thing when they first started, or tornado drills, it has to evolve over time.
But a fire drill and a tornado drill are not teaching the fire and the tornado how to hit the building different, so they can be more effective.
What evidence do you have that that could possibly happen with an Alice drill?
The Parkland shooter, what took place, he was in some of these drills that they did.
An Alice drill?
Well, I don't know if it was an, it was a school shooter drill.
You understand what's different about Alice than the previous programs we've had, right?
I don't know that there's any difference. Alice is a for-profit, they're out there to make money.
That has nothing to do with it.
Yes, it has everything to do with it. They are cherry-picking the report that they're basing their company on. They should have let us know that we have to send out permission slips to parents to opt them out.
We're only on the one topic of how can you think that an Alice drill can lead to training a shooter?
Because you're telling them what's going to happen.
No, you are not, that's exactly the opposite of an Alice drill, because in an Alice drill, what you're doing is you're telling the staff members and even the students, you need to make it up on the side. You figure out, do you go this way, do you go that way, do you barricade in place to evacuate? And there's not an identified evacuation center that's broadcast to the students, so none of that actually happens that concerned.
I just think this was poorly handled. Yeah, you might have a point there. I just, I think the big thing now is that we have to let parents know that they have every right to opt their child out, and that the staff has every right to say, "I don't feel comfortable participating in this drill."
Well, in turn, I think you're exactly right on that point too. And so in the future, we can use that as a lesson learned and maybe create a better system with multiple means of communicating with the parents so that they don't miss that one communication, which I know I've missed plenty of communications about my kids. But I think that is good, and it is recommended by, well, birthday Alice people, as you mentioned, and also the National Association of School Psychologists, as you presented that material to us as well.
Yeah, with the provision that there is no study or research that backs up this intruder.
I don't know about studies for the other kinds of disaster preparedness we've done either.
Right, like is there a study that says a school that doesn't follow your alarm annually or whatever it is, do they suffer less damage in event of an active?
Tornadoes and school fires are very rare too.
Remember, this is a requirement because of the safety grant, you know? Well, maybe, that's where they talk about, we have to balance our resources. Is this worth putting our children through this trauma to get this grant?
As I recall in Sandy Hook, they had done exactly this kind of drill beforehand, and it resulted in saving lives. So it seems to me that what's happened culturally is that the shooters are very creative, but they're, most of them, from Columbine on, have been imitations and people that have taken the data and the experiences in it. And the more publicity it gets, the more people become educated, the shooters become educated and try different things. And that's the frightening part about this, is that it's exploded in our culture.
Well, and it is, it's 1% of death by gun for our kids are school shootings, and is that worth it? I mean, there's anecdotal evidence out there of kids being upset about shootings that happen in school. Is it worth having those kids suffer that? I just, I don't know that it is.
Do we have any evidence from parents or from staff that any of the kids have been negatively?
That came back to me.
No one has come back to us, okay.
We never received any.
And so I think one of the important things is, we can do certainly a better job in the future of talking about on the board. And second, that maybe create a more robust opt-out program, so that staff members and parents would have more information ahead of time. And the idea of sharing information in close proximity to the drill, so parents will have opportunities to talk to their students, they know what the students experienced would be useful to them. And I know we did some of that, I saw those reports.
I have two comments, so just to go back to no reports of students that were affected, I know we got that response about the, one of the school drills afterwards, immediately after. And I find that to be a little bit risky, we don't know what students internalize, we don't know what's going to, maybe what they hold internally for six months, a year, two years, so I don't. So, I don't think, you know, physically observing something is safe. Second of all, I just want to go back to the five, six-page PowerPoint slide that you had on this. I know that for, no, 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 when you originally sent information and then to review it, we had to request permission from you. And then I know parents contacted me and then I directed them to, because they...
Yeah, and we fixed that.
Okay, because that was the concern is they want to know what the training was in advance. So, if you fix that, then thank you.
And we'll make a more aesthetically pleasing video next year, hopefully using the Wausa East one or two.
Maybe a timely email would go out with a link to the item, then there's plenty of time to contemplate and reflect on it.
Well, Trish, in response to your first statement, and I didn't mean to indicate that if we haven't heard already, there's no trouble, but rather if we do, if we had heard, we could retail it.
It wasn't just that we heard it in another way also, so I had some concern at that point as well.
Well, and the comment I wanted to make was, I was most concerned when I thought they were really going to use fake bullets. And then I was assured that they were just going to do blocks of wood. And that still kind of bothered me, but then it was a little bit better when it was explained that they demonstrated to the students at Wausa East that that's what they were going to do when they showed them. The thing I was concerned about is how they got together to debrief in a large setting. And when I asked about that, I was told that, and I understood this, lots of teachers didn't feel comfortable answering questions that the students might have about the drill and things that they should do. But lots of children who could be traumatized by this are not going to ask any questions in a large group setting. And John, we know how technology savvy I am. I was thinking that everyone could have, at East, been in their homeroom and the officers would have been taking questions through technology. And the students were in a small setting with that teacher, the homeroom teacher, whoever, that they truly have some relationship with. As a student, if I look back, I certainly in a large group would not have asked a question. And so, that was one of my concerns is the debriefing process. And I think it should be more intimate, not large. That was just one of the things I thought as we went through.
If I may respond, thank you for sharing that. I think there's some value there. Just so you know, we did have the whole guidance department available, you know, in case there was a student who was upset, traumatized, who didn't want to go to the debrief or whatever. And I believe, the last I checked, before I left that day, no student had taken advantage of that opportunity. Doesn't mean somebody wasn't upset, but they didn't leave the event, so thank you for being back.
I just think it's just more intimate is better.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Just a comment, then in some senses, it may be reassuring that they're doing this kind of training because what happens with all the media that goes out, when you get a shooting in a school in Florida, everybody in the country knows about it and the kids are going to be scared about it anyway. So, in some sense, the fact that the school's doing something may be very reassuring that there are some options and that we are concerned about this and we are concerned about taking care of the kids. So, it seems to me there's some positives to this also.
Well, that's what I said. I said, this is very well-intentioned, just like our DARE program was, but we don't know that in the long run it's the right thing to do because DARE was not.
I don't know if it ends now to the DARE program. I don't know what was and what wasn't effective within it, so, but I can't speak to that. Michael, thank you. The next item on the agenda is Wausa District Safety Plan, and this is an action item.
So, this was the same safety plan that Jeff Lindell brought last January. The only thing that I updated is 5706. I put the new one in here and then I changed a couple of names on the very back on page 24. Of course, replaced my name with Jeff Lindell's and then a couple of staff members needed to be updated as well.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I do have a question about page five and the reference with PBIS. Is that, is that really the most effective program for good behavior?
It's one of our programs for behavior.
It's the elementary program primarily, or is it...
We use it through the, throughout the district. I think the majority of Wisconsin schools use it.
Yeah, and the main component, I know what, what most people have concerns about with PBIS is the reward aspect. Frankly, the biggest, the most effective component of PBIS is the pre-instruction on behaviors and expectations. That's where most of the value comes in. It's a good universal tool.
I would like to see us make it our own and get rid of some of the things, like the trinkets where kids learn, if I do something good, I get something.
Or the students that are doing or trying their hardest and they're not rewarded and then they find the student's getting rewarded and I'm sitting here trying so hard and I'm not?
Well, that's something we hear, right? It's complaints that students who ostensibly aren't causing problems, these students who are then being rewarded when those students make improvements. And I understand the mentality behind that and you certainly want to begin to encourage better behavior. But what, you know, what have you all experienced in the schools regarding that, that tension there and that, you know, that rewarding of students who still did all these things that were a problem? What are you experiencing in regards to that?
I mean, I think, yes, you're correct, that sometimes that does happen, you know, and sometimes kids who just do the right thing, is a ticket going to make their day or break their day? No. But sometimes to the student who's on that margin of, like, I could do something that I may be not supposed to do, or I can follow this rule and they receive that ticket for doing the right thing, that builds up their capacity for choosing that positive behavior.
Yeah, and, you know, there's, if you, we all want, we all, we know, we have concerns about student behavior. You know, and really, you know, there's four different ways to address an issue. You know, you've got your structural ways with your rules, your policies, and you've got your political aspects, you've got your symbolic and you've got your one-on-one kinds of things. I think, you know, some of the, you know, some of the reward systems, I think part of it is just a symbolic nature saying, you know, we appreciate the fact that you are doing the right thing, we appreciate the fact that you are, you know, trying to improve. It's really, I see it more as symbolic as, you know, it may, it may be a motivator, but, you know, there are a number of students who say, well, you know, I do the right thing all the time and I, you know, it is an opportunity to say thank you, I guess.
The interesting thing, I guess, in the six years I've been on the board, how long has this program been in place?
Ten years, maybe?
It just seems like every year the behavior issues get more and more. So, you talk about the DARE program being ineffective. I would love to see us collectively review this, perhaps in the meeting following this one. We can at least talk about what a process might be to review this and really look at some potentially alternative strategies to get at some of the goals that we have around behavior because I, anecdotally, this doesn't seem to work. And maybe we've done too good of a job of implementing it, quite honestly. It just seems like we're going in the wrong direction for a long time.
The gift, the trinkets and stuff, to me, that's, that's an external thing and we need these kids to internalize this. It has to become intrinsic and there's got to be some way to cover that, to make it from, you're no longer going to get a ticket for doing good things. It's what's expected and you should feel good about it inside. And to keep doing this year after year after year, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem to be working.
I like the idea of looking at it and seeing if we have other options. I just wanted to add about the giving of the tickets or whatever it might be. Those, those aren't just given to the students who misbehave, though. I mean, they're, they're given to the students that are also doing the right thing all the time for doing nothing other than just being quiet in the hallway or just doing the right thing. So, it isn't just that the misbehaving students get the tickets. All the students are getting positive reinforcement.
Yeah, John, weird, they had to have them in order to go over the rest.
Kids get it, this positive reinforcement.
But I think the thing comes in, though, is that the kids that misbehave get focused on and, and when they're good, they get a ticket, but the rest of the kids, it's kind of hit or miss. You know, they walk down the hall every day and they're, they're good and they're kind and they don't get a ticket every day. But the kid that routinely misbehaves, every time or almost every time he's good, somebody's giving him a ticket. And the kids see that and it just doesn't seem balanced to them. And I don't know what the answer is, yeah.
You have to start on one side of the spectrum in order to get rewarded more. Kids have figured that out. So, I, I don't know how we get around that other than, as I said, let's take a look at this, see what makes sense, you know, make it our own, whatever the case is, but something has to change.
Right, yeah, so, you know, there's a lot of factors behind changes in the incidence rates and, you know, the scale of bad behaviors. And PBIS is one of the tools we have to try to combat that. And so, I guess one of the things we're trying to figure out is, I mean, how can we know whether it's working or not? You know, what kind of measurements? And there's anecdotal and, of course, that anecdote of the student who's disruptive, being good and getting rewarded and the other not, right? That's the one that constantly comes forward because it's a very, a very easily mentally illustrated, right? You can picture that yourself very easily. And so, we hear that again and again because it really is such a powerful symbolic element. But I think what we really need to know is both in terms of anecdotal evidence and then in some more measurable ways, can, how can we know if this program is working versus how can we know if other plans work better or worse? You know, what are the metrics behind that? I think that's kind of where we want to, we want to head towards.
Absolutely, and that'll be part of that strategic planning process that we'll be talking about.
That we'll be talking about later tonight again. So, it's, it doesn't go away. It's coming back up at least one more time tonight and I'm sure we'll be coming back repeatedly.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, I'd be, is there any other questions before we look for the motion? All right, so, I'm looking for a motion to approve the district's safety plan.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is older recurring business, this is from the Education Operations Committee of the Whole, and this is something for everyone listening to know that issues coming up here have been talked about sometimes on multiple occasions. So, if it seems like we're, we're just coming to a decision without really thinking our way through it, that's happened in some places again and again and again. And so, when you come to the regular board meeting, we're just doing the final step in some of these, some of these issues. So, if you really want to see the fund come up to all the committee meetings, and then you'll see how the sausage is made. All right, so, older recurring business from the Education Operations Committee of the Whole. The first issue is the legal expense summary for the first quarter. So, at the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Chief Finance and Business Service Officer Bob Test presented a summary report representing all legal expenses incurred during the first quarter of 2018-19. The report is broken down by law firm and type of legal advice sought. Is there any additional questions or comments that anyone would like to make at this point? All right, thank you very much. Moving on, new business, and this is from Education Operations Committee of the Whole. And this is, again, this is an informational. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Bob Test, Chief Finance and Business Services Officer, and Noel Torson, Supervisor of Financial Services, shared many of the key variables contributing to the district's multi-year financial projection model. The model represents a baseline using current information to which adjustments are subsequently made. The projection model uses budget numbers from the 2018-19 district budget with percentages cast forward along with adjustments to create this baseline. Once these assumptions are built into the model, it will be presented to the board at a later date. Any questions or comments that anyone would like to make on that issue? Okay, hearing none, move forward. Student transportation contract approval, and this is an action item. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Bob Test, Chief Finance and Service Business Services Officer, asked the Education Operations Committee to approve a new five-year contract with First Student for student transportation services. This new contract follows the current five-year contract with First Student and is a result of a competitive bidding process used to select a bussing partner. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Trump?
Sure.
I don't know if you want me to say a word or two while the motion is on the table or say it now or...
No.
Go ahead, no.
No. There was a recommendation at the committee level to put a cap on the shortage of labor condition. And at that point, the contract negotiations, it's hard to get anything worked in without some quid pro quo, and I didn't want to give anything up, that's for sure, because you'd be surprised by that. But First Student agreed to incorporate some language to limit the exposure. It's in 13, I do a 13, and it's 2% of the contract, which still is a pretty sizable cap, but at least there's a cap, so there's some protection worked in. And of course, there would be other strategies we have used before it would hopefully come to that. Aside from that, so thank you, First Student, for bringing that. I brought someone along with me tonight, if you saw this young man walk into the boardroom, Bob Morton. He's the location manager for First Student. And I invited him to come today, not necessarily two weeks ago when we were talking about negotiating the contract, but as it got a little bit closer to being a reality, I invited Bob to come tonight. And if you would like to say a word or two, Bob, about the relationship between the district and First Student, how strong it is. This would be a good time.
Okay. Bob and I, we work pretty much hand in hand. I come from a transportation background, I got 45 years in transportation. The last eight years of, before I started with First Student, I was a consultant for transportation, safety, operations and customer service. When I got here, the terminal was ranked 178th in the United States. Now, out of 420 locations, right now, our terminal's ranked 27th in the United States. We're ranked second in the state of Wisconsin. So, the improvement in the operations, the safety and everything else is starting to show. And that's because we're working so, so close with Bob, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, very good work, thank you. Okay, any comments or questions? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the student transportation contract between the district and First Student for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2024. So moved. Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is also an action item. New course requests for the 2019-2020 school year. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Tom Hahn, Director of Secondary Education, presented the Board of Education with two new AP course requests from Wausa West for the 2019-2020 school year. Additionally, the Board of Education was made aware of new project-based learning program being developed at Wausa East and course description updates for two new high school, two high school courses. Tom, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, the, the two courses, the AP Art Studio course and the Computer Science Principles, those are the two that we are requesting approval for. The others were presented as more of a report and it was my mistake, they should have been taken out of that under the guise of action requested. Next week at our meeting, the teachers from the project-based learning program will be here with a more in-depth presentation of what's planned so that you can have a better look at that before making a decision.
All right, and the, the motion is to approve two new AP course requests for the 2019-2020 school year, so it's restricted to just those two.
And, and Tom, thanks because I have a whole list of questions, so I'll save those for next week.
And if you want to send them, send them to me before we can try and get some answers so that you can have them in advance as well.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Even better, great. All right, anything else? All right, so I'm looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is also an action item. Student fee request for the 2019-2020 school year. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Tom Hahn, Director of Secondary Education, presented the Board of Education with proposed student fee... presented the Board of Education with proposed student fee increases of more than five dollars per district policy. If they're going up by more than that, they, they have to be reported to us for, for our approval. Requested by the schools for the 2019-2020 school year. Tom, anything in addition?
Nothing new, it's just that we're, we're happy that there's only four additions, and there's a whole bunch more deletions. And that's what we're trying to do, is bring those fees down as much as possible.
So on the whole, fees went down.
Yes.
And some very significantly, so we've been, our staff, I should say, because we didn't do anything, but you guys have done a good job finding efficiencies out there to help save us all money, so thank you very much. And students, of course, who can't afford these fees, they are covered, so that's not to be worried about. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the student fee request for the 2019-2020 school year as presented, if there are no further comments, questions?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Four K program agreement. The Wausau School District four-year-old kindergarten program has entered into program agreements with community collaboration sites since 2002. In previous years, the Wausau Schools had had agreements with the following sites: Wausau Childcare East and West, Mountain View Montessori, Y M C A, Little Scholars, Newman Catholic Schools, and Head Start. At the November Operations Education Committee meeting, Kara Rakowski, four K Principal and Early Childhood Coordinator, and Andrea Sheridan, Director of Teaching, Learning, and Leadership Integration, reviewed the program agreement for the 2019-2020 school year. And Kara and Andrea, do you have anything to add?
Do not.
Well, good, okay, any questions or comments from the board? All right, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the four K agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Summer learning presentation, this is information only. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, the summer learning administrative team reviewed programming from Summer Learning 2018 and previewed Summer Learning 2019. Are there any updates to that, or any questions from the board? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. School force capital improvement update, again, information only. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Jerry Manning, Environmental Education Coordinator, presented conceptual drawings and cost estimates for the initial capital improvement plan for the school forests. I don't see Jerry here, but are there any, Larry, any updates?
We're just continuing to refine the plan, and I know we're meeting with a cross-section of different people to get inputs from various points of view to really button that plan up nice and tight and really get those estimates nailed down as well.
All right, thank you, Larry, anything from the board? Suppose Bob didn't find the money yet? We're looking underneath every rainbow, and it just isn't-
Checking those coaches. Maybe stuff, sorry.
All right, so from the Policy Resolution and Legislation Committee of the whole, Policy 5120, K-12 assignment of school, of students to schools. At the November P R L meeting, Angie Lloyd presented proposed changes to Policy 5120, K-12 assignment of students to schools. Any updates to that, Angie?
The only ones that I was coming back about were the examples of unusual educational reasons, and Tom and I had talked that the only ones we've ever really given permission to switch schools were the IB and AP programs at the high schools.
Okay.
So I have that in there, as like samples.
All right, any additional comments or questions?
I would, I would just see some clarification in that AP and IB, just student desires to attend, or to attend a school that has AP but resides in IB, something to that, but it just says AP and IB, and that's not really clear.
Yeah, and we'll clarify.
Okay.
We'll clarify it in there.
Yeah, what, uh-
That's under conditions, Dean, the last sentence, examples of unusual educational reasons include but are not limited to AP and IB, so it doesn't really-
Doesn't explain what that would be about.
I don't think it is a major change, but it would just be a little more precise.
That's, that's good, so that's a friendly amendment. All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm seeking a motion to approve Policy 5120, K-12, assignment of students to schools as presented with that friendly amendment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next motion is on Policy 1300, Public Participation in Board Meetings. At the November P R L meeting, Dr. Hiltz presented proposed changes to Policy 1300, Public Participation in Board Meetings. Pete, any changes?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, seek the motion to approve Policy 1300, Public Participation in Board Meetings as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And finally, Policy 5750, Expulsion Procedures. Angie Lloyd will present further revisions to Policy 5750, Expulsion Procedures. Angie?
We just moved possession of firearms up to number one, and then I took out number six, thank you, Tricia, for helping me with that. That was just a little sub, what is it called? Sub, something on there. So we moved that down to the bottom. It wasn't part, it just could, was kind of more of a defining factor of the rest of them.
The only thing, I'm wondering, Angie is after number one here, should that have a semicolon at four?
Yes.
The Modern Languages Association doesn't like it when we do that. They call it misappropriation, the semi, misappropriating the semicolon, but it's-
You're gonna let it go, huh?
I'm gonna let it go.
I think we should discuss it.
Let's get the M L A on Skype. I could tell you all about it.
Yeah, there's a buddy.
You notice I'm not doing that so much anymore, though? I'm letting it go. All right. Okay, so, looking for the motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Committee board referrals, there are none, and now we have the open forum for public and student comments for items not appearing on the agenda.
Seven, yeah.
Okay. And since these, since what you plan to talk about didn't appear on our agenda, we can't respond to you, because we can't talk, we can't make any decisions or steer a conversation towards making any decisions for anything that hasn't been properly legally agendized. And so I apologize if that makes it appear that we're not paying attention, but I at least will be scribbling notes, and I hope you do feel and know that you're being listened to. So the first name is Christine Hisley, and please come forward and give your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Christine Hisley, I'm following up my sister, so I apologize, I don't have a fancy presentation here, for me as a concerned parent. 317 North Horse Street, number 202, my daughter attends Hawthorne Health, fifth grade. Many of you have received my emails. Thank you, Teresa, wherever you are, for responding. You're the only one to respond to my last email, so thank you. I did talk to Angie Lloyd today, so she's aware of many of the things I'm going to be bringing up. This is just really to inform you further of things that have been going on. I know that the consensus has been that things have been getting better. Who brought up PBIS? I absolutely agree, it's not working. I attended lunch today with my daughter, and again, the kids are, a girl was called a hoe, a fucking hoe, four times in the morning, daily, the girls are called a bitch, a whore, the unmentioned, well, this is fifth grade, and they're dealing with this on a daily basis. I view this as child endangerment. Child endangerment refers to an act or omission that renders a child to psychological, emotional, and physical abuse. And daughter, and the other girls are being subjected to this daily, non-estudying behavior. Why? And why is this happening? What if it was your daughter, your grandchild? A whore, a bitch, a fucking hoe, every day. The boy who threatened rape against my daughter and another girl was given an award, a PBIS award, the week after it happened. Why? When you look at the kids who ended up getting the awards, today at lunch, the kids are... Why are the bad kids getting all the awards? Why are they getting rewarded? And it's not, they're not getting rewarded for stopping behavior, they're getting rewarded for being, for improvement. Maybe they only called a kid a name three times instead of ten. It's not working. Last week, the disruptors were in the principal's office coloring each other's hair with Sharpies. How can teachers have maintained control when the kids know they can go down to the principal's office and basically do whatever they want? A quick search on Google tells you that when you color your hair with a Sharpie, it doesn't just come out, it breaks off. So around Christmas time, there's going to be a bunch of girls with no hair, possibly. If you were the parent, if your kid came home with Sharpie in their hair, what, how would you feel? That started last Thursday, it went on to Friday, and then today at lunch, the girls again had the Sharpies out on the playground, asking girls if they wanted to color their hair. One of the girls last week then took one of the Sharpies and wrote "die" in the snow, which today I could still see written "die" over and over again to my daughter. It's the second time this year my daughter's been threatened with that. I found out the iPads, who many parents have seen over and over again, the kids gaming on them, watching inappropriate videos, we all thought that there was a, some sort of control over these iPads. Well, apparently the kids have figured out, all they have to do is sign out on the iPads and re-log in on their own personal emails at home, and they can get onto anything at school. Today, there was a sub, the kids are playing Fortnite. My daughter told me they're playing Fortnite all afternoon, and this is going on, gaming and YouTube daily, and I've seen them doing in the office, in the principal's office, gaming. I let Angie know this today. I don't know if it's only the lower-level grades, or if it's a district-wide policy, but why, when you think that, as a parent, I think that there are parental controls in place, why is this being allowed to happen? And if the teachers are seeing them gaming, why isn't it stopped? Why aren't the iPads taken away? I don't get it. As a parent, why is it stopped? Today at lunch, a girl climbed a fence, standing on top of the fence, as a parent, I'm just like, oh, she's ten feet in the air, I'm like, oh my God, if she falls, she's going to crack her head open on the pavement. All the kids are pointing, going, look, look. I look over to the eight, I'm like, get her off the fence. And he just shrugged his shoulders. Over and over again, my daughter and other kids are reporting things, and nothing's getting done. They're told nothing, it doesn't matter. Thank you for listening. Sorry to be so emotional. These girls are being scarred for life, for life. It's not fair.
Thank you. The next name is John Lawson.
John Lawson, 803 Stewart Street. All good news this evening. First of all, the Wausau Education Association recertified again with W E R C, and we look forward to, again, being able to sit down at some negotiations table this summer when that time arrives, and of course, we're very proud of the efforts of our folks for making that happen. The W E A-led turkey drive raised $5,000. That money was divided up among various W S D food banks and Wausau Metro food banks in terms of turkeys, and money was also given to the food banks in different areas to help out families in need, so we're very proud of not only teachers, but also long fellow administration. Dr. Hiltz and his staff were challenged by the W E A exec team, and I want to commend him for taking up that challenge and collecting some money from central office, that was the first time that was ever done, so thank you for that, for getting involved. W E A, piggybacking on that, W E A is very encouraged with Dr. Hiltz's efforts in regards to positive communication with educators from around the district. We would like to thank him for his initial work in that area and look forward to collaborating with him, especially in relationship to the compensation model. And finally, on behalf of the, to the entire board, on behalf of the W E A exec council, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, happy holidays, and just have a great holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will get the pronunciation of your name right one of these days. Put a U in there and I'd get it. Oh, that's one of my pronouns, I'm sorry. Board member professional growth and development reports, are there any board members who wish to share any professional growth and development for this month?
I do. I had the opportunity to go to the Effective Legislative Advocacy Workshop, and there were some things that weren't really profound in it, but there were other things that I thought were very, very useful. The emphasis, of course, was the fact that there's legislation at both the federal and state level that had direct impact on the schools, and best that I report today is that was reported, at least one item, that was significant concern, that the tendency for student board members is to, even though we are in a position of being elected officials to the same constituency that the people that are representing us in the Senate and the Assembly and the State, we have an advantage of being able to speak directly with them, and it's important, and would really emphasize how important it is to establish those as a meaningful first-name relationship basis, that the direct contact and those personal relationships really literally foster situations when ultimately those legislators may come back to us and ask specifically how a particular bill may impact and have an impact on our school district. So the emphasis was very, very strong on not only creating relationships with the legislator themselves, but also with their staff, because the staff are the ones that are most often get the first-person contact. I'm guilty, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm, I'm particularly guilty about it, being aware of some of these things and not taking the action, or just picking up the phone, sending an email, or taking some kind of action that may have a direct positive impact on the kids in our district. And there were a number of things that were presented and specific techniques that we could use that were, would be useful. But at the, and at the same time, there's a lot of resources that are available to us, both through the blog, through the legislative newsletter that comes out once a week. Sometimes there'll be an opportunity when there's a real crisis where there will be notified to take action through voter voice, so there's, there's opportunities that we can use. The other thing that they suggested, and I thought was very intriguing, was that with the legislative report, that if there's a particular piece that's coming up that, that may have direct impact, that we as a board might want to take five minutes or take a period of time to talk about a specific bill, whether it means that there's a recommendation that we take individual action- whether it means that there's a recommendation that we take individual action or if the recommendation is that, that the president of the board may take some specific action with regards, with regard to legislation. So I thought those, I thought it was a really useful time. I appreciated the opportunity to go and, and I really, really think that I would like to see us starting to take some real action to encourage and support things that will, that will change our culture in Madison. I think we're gonna have some new opportunities now, starting in, in, in January. The governor will be making a presentation at the convention. The state budget will be released probably sometime in February. In March, there's a meeting in Medford for people for area boards of education regarding legislation. And there's a date of capital on March thirteenth. They will actually arrange appointments for us to meet with our representatives, if we would like. So I thank you for the opportunity to share this.
One of the things I wanted to point out tonight, it just goes right with this, is that Governor-elect Evers' transition team is going to be in Wausau on Wednesday for building the people's budget. It says, "Help shape the next state budget from twelve to one thirty at the Labor Temple." I've heard, it's his transition team, I've heard he's actually going to be there along with Lieutenant Governor Barnes, I'm not exactly sure which it is, but...
Yes, he is gonna be here.
And I, I would encourage any board member and anybody in this room that can go to attend because part of helping shape the budget, I certainly intend to go and hope to make some statements on how we could certainly use some more money for our school district. And I think the more voices that he hears on that would be ideal. So I know you need a ticket. If you can't find it by Googling, feel free to send me an email, I do have the link. But again, that's this Wednesday, twelve to one thirty at the Labor Temple.
This week?
Yes.
And, and I'll be brief, but almost everybody sitting in this room has a student in the Wausau School District. And the Wausau School Foundation is offering a special award. It's called the Spark Award. And we'd like someone from every school to win the award about something they've done first semester to really innovate student learning. And that if, and it doesn't take a lot of time. And the deadline is January the fourth. Amy's put out some blurbs for us about notifying parents, correct, Amy?
Yes.
And just making everyone aware that it's just another way to recognize teachers that do really neat things. And I encourage all of you to think of someone that you know should be nominated and do that before January the fourth. The other thing, we had a CISA nine meeting last week and they trained twenty-five new teachers to be substitutes in our school. And of those twenty-five, eight are interested in maybe getting their teaching certification, which would really help us in finding teachers. So I thought that was something noteworthy, so thank you.
I do have one other thing. So two weeks ago, I don't know if maybe you're aware, maybe not, but the city of Wausau adopted the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I did work on that effort in my capacity as a Ho'outum citizen in this city with Mayor Melty and Wausau City Council. And the reason I bring it up now is because I would urge this board or a future iteration of this board to consider adopting the same day on the school calendar, given that we are the district and Wausau's already adopting it.
Alright, thank you very much. Now, one thing in reference to several things here, remember, every, every board member can go to these things on their own, right? You don't go representing the board, you go representing yourself. But there's no limitation on you going and speaking and asking questions and such. And let's do the board workshop, work on a process where we can start putting together more resolutions. We've done it in the past, but not terribly frequently when there's been a piece of legislation before the state government that we had a indefinite interest in. So let's, let's try to make that a more formal part of our, our procedures. And again, anybody can, can bring that forward and we can take it, you know, to vote at the very next meeting. So that's something that we can, we can be doing. My schedule will be opening up very soon. Finals are next week. And so I'll be able to give more time to this kind of thing too, that, that I haven't been giving much to. So thank you very much. Superintendent Hiltz, Superintendent Scott, and Terry.
Sure, just to let the board know, a number of us tomorrow are gonna be working with some, I believe it's a group of young professionals that have elected to take part in a project called the Immersion Project through the Wausau Chamber of Commerce. All but one of them are new to the area and they've elected to take part in this multi-month project whereby they, they learn kind of the ins and outs of various important aspects of the community. And tomorrow was a K twelve education, kind of a deep dive. And so a number of the folks sitting here, myself, are meeting with, I believe there's ten participants in the project. So we're, we're looking forward to meeting them and sharing some, some great things about our district. I know they're taking, they're with the D C Everest District in the morning and us in the afternoon, so that, so it should be a nice opportunity to educate people about some of the, some of the deeper issues in, in education.
And Keith, again, where are these, these members of the project coming from?
They, they live here in Wausau.
Okay.
Yes. Second thing, just want to point out, we have a guest tonight, a new employee, Mr. Miller. Are you here? You are. Brian Miller, in case you haven't met, Mr. Miller is our new athletic co-curricular director at Wausau West. I will admit, we had a, a previous relationship in Ashland. He was my athletic director in Ashland as well, so I'm glad he's come to join us. Welcome, Brian, good to see you, thanks for coming.
Alright, well, I guess I already said my commentary. So thank you all for all the efforts you've put in this month. And we'll be adjourned shortly and then reconvening for a board workshop. So thank you, everyone, for coming. And the board workshop, of course, is also an open meeting. So I will see everybody up there in a minute. I have to talk to the press first, so I'll be up a little bit later. So a motion to adjourn?
I'm on the move. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You want more abstentions?